I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village of Northfield regular council meeting on November 14th, 2018. So I'm ready for pledge please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call please.
Yes.
Here.
Mr. Magistrelli.
Here.
Mr. Scher.
Here.
Ms. Domsalski.
Here.
Mr. Hips.
Here.
Ms. Noack.
Here.
Mr. Voitush.
Here.
Mr. Bryan is absent. Mr. Wasowski.
Here.
Chief Zolgus.
Here.
Lieutenant Zemec.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
And I'm present.
Okay, before we go any further, I'd just like to welcome Gary back. Good to see you, Gary. Glad to have you back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, can we get the approval of the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, yeah, minutes are approved.
Well, we have to vote in favor of that.
Who's doing that? You're doing that.
I guess I'm doing it. Um, wait. All in favor of approval of the minutes from October 10th, 2018?
Yes.
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 Abstain.
I'm recording.
Abstain.
Minutes are approved.
At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address us at this time? Yes, please sign in, sir. I guess we never realize how important Brad is at these meetings.
Push it.
Push it again. Go turn his red. Yeah, there you go.
Uh, hello, uh, my, my name is Ben Robinalt. Uh, I live at, uh, 242 Steeplechase Run. Uh, I'm the president of the, uh, Steeplechase condo association there that includes Steeplechase Run and Trotter Lane. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, uh, trash can, uh, or trash hauling, uh, contract that we got. Um, I've already talked with or emailed the mayor and, uh, administrative assistants. Uh, our problem was the trash cans were too large, basically, for our area because we have, uh, very limited space. Uh, it's a condo complex, so there's really no sides to the condos. So the trash cans are stored in the garages. A lot of those are single one-car garages. Uh, so the trash can sizes are very important. So we had these 96-gallon cans, uh, which for, uh, a lot of our residents being just single people would take, you know, a month or two to fill, basically. Uh, yet we have to store them 100% of the time trying to get around them with our cars and such. Uh, we did get a partial resolution of that, working with the city, and, and thank you for that. Uh, gave us, uh, 64-gallon cans. Uh, it would be nice, though, in future negotiations, if we could achieve, uh, either allowing us to use our own cans or even smaller 32-gallon sizes as an option. I understand for, uh, the, uh, waste management, they're using the cans as a signifier that you have, uh, service, basically. Um, in some other jurisdictions of the country, they've given out stickers that you can stick on your cans, or, again, they use, just use smaller cans. And then you can use an additional can. They're, they're fine with you using your own cans as long as you have their can out all, as well, is how it seems to work so far. Um, so I guess in the future, I'd like to see that as, as part of the contract negotiations that, uh, you allow smaller cans. I, and, sorry, one more thing, too, with the, getting these smaller cans, we had an understanding with, uh, waste management that they would come on a specific date and swap the cans out. When we had circulated notices to our, uh, condo residents, they did not come on that date. So we had to do it again to get it done the following week. So that's, just goes to waste management's service as well. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, reports of municipal officers. The mayor at this time, um, does not have anything, but I will have something at, uh, the next meeting. Moving on to the finance director, Mr. Ingresia.
Um, I just have the explanation for the, uh, amendments to the appropriations. Um, just reviewing through the end of the year, we have to increase our, um, legal services and that the majority of the legal services that we pay are for prosecutions, just so everybody's aware. So, um, it's not, um, you know, the daily items. The next line is, um, what we're going to, I have an, I'm giving Brad's report this evening. We have to increase the contractual services line for land and building, uh, for, uh, renovation of the Ledge Road parking lot. And finally, um, also on the agenda this evening is, um, an amendment to the last salt ordinance that we, or resolution that we passed because the price has yet increased yet again. So we're gonna have to reappropriate that, and it will probably result in another transfer from the general fund to the SCMNR fund. However, I, I don't know exactly what I'm gonna do with that, so... But we have to do it. There's no choice. Um, and that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. Moving on to Mr. Wasowski, the engineer.
Uh, the Ledge Road reconstruction, the contractor finished all his punch list items except for raising three water valve boxes to grade and reinstalling the one monument box. And, uh, he needs, uh, some good weather to do that. He needs over 50 degrees, basically, to do that. Um, we'll check in May on the stats. The gra, the grass is actually growing very well. So we're checking May for a final check on everything. Um, I have not received all, all of his final paperwork. He sent me some stuff, but not all of it yet. And, um, I gave him the final pay quantities for his, uh, final, um, application to verify with his numbers. And, um, as soon as he gets that, uh, I will, uh, figure out the exact amount Macedoni has to pay for the project, all the, uh, their items versus our items, and we'll bill them. Uh, the six-year road construction engineering costs, uh, the mayor asked me to make a five-year, um, cost estimate. I, I put a six-year in because six years we did all the roads behind the plaza done in that period. And six-year, we, we, we could if we wanted to. But, um, I'm not sure, Mayor, did you pass that out to anybody yet?
Not yet. I did not. I don't know if, I don't know if the finance director did. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, make any changes you want, switch the order around the way you want it. That's just my recommendations on, uh, what we do. Um, one thing on the cost, asphalt, uh, ODOT sends, uh, notices out to the engineering consultants on a lot of this stuff on cost. The asphalt cost have gone up 8% this year, and then concrete's up about 7%. And, uh, next year, it's projected to go up again, um, above inflation. Uh, so, yeah, we had a good number of years where the cost actually stayed pretty level. But, uh, this last year, it's good in one way. Everybody's working, basically, and they're making money now rather than working for nothing, or breaking even, basically. So, um, the Houghton Road reconstruction, um, I'm still working those plans. We are gonna need, um, some right-of-way for those plans because the, the signals, some of them do not fit in the right-of-way because the right-of-way line's just one foot behind the sidewalk. So the poles on this side of the road won't fit in the existing right-of-way. And, um, the fire station, one signal for the fire station on the west side of the road won't fit either. So I talked to the state about this, since State Route 8 is a state highway right-of-way. Um, two of the properties we're involved in are owned by the Village of Northfield, this property here and the fire station. But we have to deed right-of-way over to the state highway, the state of Ohio, for that. Um, so I'll, I'll make up the documents and, and send them down. They take a while to get this all approved. Generally, it lands up going to Columbus. Their, uh, Attorney General's office looks over the documents, makes a few comments, and then sends them back. So we'll probably end up bidding the job while they're still, uh, reviewing the right-of-way documents. I just wanna get a preliminary approval from them that they're okay with it, and then we'll, we'll bid it. Um, okay, so it may, maybe January before, uh, we're gonna be able to bid that because of that, that right-of-way problem we're gonna have. Uh, State Route 8, uh, Ledge Road traffic signal, uh, nothing's happening. Still waiting for, uh, the poles and the equipment to come in. They have, they've given them no date yet when, uh, they'll deliver those. So that's where we stand.
Rich, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, concerning Ledge Road, just a couple of things. So the water valves, those are the ones that are, like, pretty much cemented over?
Yeah.
Okay, so just wanted to make sure.
Those three, right in front of the service department, yeah.
Yeah. And is the ones that I pointed out to you that, like, the, the PCV pipe is still open and the, the, there's no cover, is that gonna affect anything for the winter time since they're not covered yet in those three residents?
Well, the, the snow will get in there.
But it won't?
It'll melt.
Okay.
And just go into the sore.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
But, uh, we're, I, I think, uh, yeah, we're, we're gonna do that part of it because, um, they're, they weren't responsible for those, I think it was three of them.
Yeah, I think there's three.
Three, yeah. Yeah, so we're just gonna take care of ourselves.
Okay. And then for the six-year project you were talking about behind the plaza, do you know what next road you're looking at?
Coventry.
North Plaza's looking pretty bad, too. Where you're coming from, and it's, it's patched, but it's...
Right. Well, yeah, whatever mayor and council decides, uh, what I was planning to do is just going, we did Cranbrook and worked our way up to, uh, North Plaza.
Okay.
One, one after another, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just being vocal.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Though, one, one thing, uh, if we do North Plaza first, when we do the other ones, we're gonna be hauling all these trucks in there.
True.
Over a road we just did, so I...
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
The law director is not present. We'll get our next regular scheduled council meeting.
I, I have a report from him.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Um, the first thing that he has on his list is the, uh, September 2018 Northfield Village Mayor's Court monthly, monthly dispersal, dispersal. Uh, I need a motion for acceptance. The total to be dispersed, uh, to the state is $2,372.50. Total due to Stowe Municipal Court, zero. Total due to City of Stowe, $64.50. Total dispersed for restitution is $490. Total due to the village is $15,880.56. Can I have a motion for acceptance, please?
Motion.
Second. Um, motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Noack. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay. Um, next thing is he wanted to remind everybody that the Sign Project meeting is changing from that Thursday? Was it normally Thursday?
Wednesday.
Due to, um, Thanksgiving. So it's Monday, the 19th, at 6:30 PM. And then, um, finally, he, um, has on here that we need a motion for the service department, um, replacement for Ledge Road parking lot. Do you have an amount for that? It's not on here. It's a $44,000 with a $5,000 credit.
It was roughly, I don't have the exact with me.
We'll say 40,000.
Yes, it, it should be more than enough. It's like 38,000 some. Do you remember, Rich?
I would say 38,000.
Yeah, it's like 38,000, so, and maybe some change, but I would, if you're not to exceed 40, you'll be fine.
I'd like to make a motion for that, not to exceed 40,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Voitush, seconded by Mr. Hips. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, that is done, and that's all I have for Mr. Bryan.
Thank you, Tricia. Moving on to department heads, please Chief John Zolgus.
Thank you, Mayor. I had emailed a copy of October's report out. Um, I would just like to just mention that the Halloween party went very well this year. Um, I would just like to say thanks to Mr. Magistrelli, the mayor, um, for serving up pizza again. Uh, Ms. Noack for sitting inside our haunted garage there and passing out candy. And Mr. Hips, we did miss you this year. Uh, Ms. Domsalski, your stepdaughter, thank you for volunteering her, so to speak. Um, I'd also like to thank, um, Joanna Nieves and my sister Anna Yupa, who did probably about 90 to 95% of the work in there, um, and made it, uh, probably as big as we've ever had it and, and pretty good. Um, our finance director got a grant from NOPEC, which helped us buy a lot of new stuff this year for it and stuff for next year. So they were a big sponsor. Um, and then we have, um, some of the, rec board member, I'm sorry, Kevin Lewis, he helped out. And, uh, we had a resident who lives on Chestnut, Marcy Winans, that she helped out again, so... Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Uh, Gretchen and Mark Appana, who, uh, cooked the hot dogs that night, and, uh, Jim from Jim's Tent Rental, who donated that tent again. So, uh, I don't know, Mayor, we must have 350, 400 people that came through. All they know is we went through 240 hot dogs, like 15 sheet pizzas, 11 dozen, just had enough. So, uh, next year, I believe they're already planning it. Yeah, so, uh, this could be a year-long project. So I'd just like to say thank you to everybody. So, um, I also have, I passed out some information on Officer Pratt, um, about making her full-time. Um, if anybody has any questions before the next council meeting or would like to, um, meet with Courtney, Officer Pratt, just let me know. That's all I have on here.
Thank you, John. Moving on to, uh, fire chief. Fire chief is not present. We have Lieutenant Joe Zemec. Joe, do you have anything for us tonight?
No real report, uh...
Do you wanna come up here to the microphone or stand up, whatever you would like to do?
No, no real report tonight. Um, just a reminder that we're gonna be doing our Santa delivery in December. Um, so we're working out some kinks on that still, but that is coming up.
And that's for, that's for the 15th, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Joe, you know, we had some people commenting on this. We've been doing this now for about four years, this way, as according to Jason Buss.
Yeah, we've, we've done the actual gift delivery for about three or four years now. We changed from doing the gift bags probably three or four years ago to where we now have parents provide gifts. We'll have small gifts for, um, families that can afford to provide gifts. But we don't, obviously, tell people that we have bunches.
Right.
But we're still working out some of the kinks. I think the deadline's at December 12th for drop-off.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Service and billions, your print to that, Mr. Walters.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, a few things. Obviously, leaf season, we had to shift the dates a little bit and started later than what, uh, you know, we had announced. So, um, some people have been worried, like, oh, did we miss you? No, we, there's no point in going out with the leaf machine when there's no lea, we didn't even have enough for, you know, to fill it once. The other issue was that, um, we were scrambling to find a place to get rid of the leaves. And, um, no longer is that a free, drop-off for us anymore. So, um, we have a PO into, we, we gotta pay per load, so, um... One of the big things is the big companies that were allowing that, and then they would end up mulching and stuff. It was kind of a trade-off, you know, they're getting the material, you know, but, you know, like everything else, you start getting EPA involved and things and storing these, you know, and it just, it becomes costly. So, um, we're not having to pay a severe amount of money, but I'm, I was near, um, I mean, actually, our finance director just kinda yelled, you can't do that. I was waiting to get yelled at that I was about to spend money to get rid of the leaves. So, um, but anyhow, I mean, I was close saying, just cancel it, you know? But the price wasn't horrible to, to get rid of them. Um, so I think it's, did you get that PO yet? It's $420 for, so you, you know, at first, uh, my, I thought it was like per lo, per yard, uh, the same fee, and I'm like, whoa, I mean, that'd be awfully costly. So it's not worth canceling something for a few hundred bucks. So, um, we are on it. Um, it ends up that we are pretty close. So we're going right to Crick Road to get rid of them. So it's not too bad. Not adding any time, it's actually, might be a little quicker. So, um, so everybody just stand by, get the leaves out. The leaves just really got out of the trees in the last, like, a few days to, you know, maybe 10. Um, so piles are now out there, and, and we're getting to them. So, um, we've got expenses as far as just getting these trucks fixed. The, the biggest thing that's kicking our butt is the, the rot and stuff that we get in the brake systems and, you know, I've talked about this before, but I'm, I'm putting a lot of money in newer-type trucks, you know? To me, it's still a new truck, but I guess it is like six, seven years old, you know, but it's the salt, it, it's one thing, but the brine, you know, you see the state putting, I don't think anybody realizes that wet brine getting in these metals over the year frames and all this, it's just, it's damaging. So, and once things sit, it just rots. So basically rebuilding this stuff, so still cheaper than buying a brand-new vehicle. So that's what we're doing. Um, other than that, we don't have a lot to report. We have everything ready for, um, when that day comes that we're gonna have to spread salt or whatnot. Everything's ready to go. Um, Tricia had talked about that in the beginning, the re-appropriating for salt. It's been a horrible game. We're going up, um, more than double of what we paid last year per ton, okay? So we're not gonna be just dumping salt so, you know, drastically, you know, we're gonna try to take care of the roads more by getting the snow off them. And, you know, when we need to salt, we will. But I lowered the amount of salt we're taking. Um, it's just, it's a lot of money. Um, so obviously, safety is important, so we'll make sure the roads are safe. But, you know, one thing that people have gotten to is where you think that if the road's not black, you haven't done anything. And, you know, I said this before, too, that growing up here, we, we had snow-packed roads. They plowed, and that was it, you know, maybe some cinders. So it's just the way things have changed. And that, back then, everything was rear-wheel-drive cars, and now we have all have, you know, all-wheel-drive and front-wheel-drive, and, you know, gotta get there quick. So, you know, we'll do the best we can, but it's very expensive, very. So... And, um, lastly, the, uh, Ledge Road project, as far as the parking lot, um, what I know right now, speaking with the, uh, super superintendent for CATS Construction, they're looking Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. Uh, so that's where we're at, okay? And that's all I have to report.
Jason, that $420, is that per load or?
That's, that's the total.
That's a total?
We did it on, we based it on 30 loads.
Okay.
So it's 14, 15 yards per load. Um, and it's, uh, we did about 30 loads, and that should be right about where we're usually at.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh... You good?
Yes.
I have one council meeting off, and I forget what I'm doing. Okay, let's see. Reports of municipal boards and commissions. Mr. Hips, a planning commission.
No report this evening.
Uh, recreation board, I'd, you know, like to thank everyone that was involved with the Veterans Day program. Um, it went very well. Um, uh, the Boy Scout troop did a great job on everything that they did for the program. Um, I wanna thank all the rec board members, wanna thank, uh, Councilwoman, Renell Noack, um, our guest speaker, just everyone that was involved. Um, everyone that donated, Stan's Bakery, uh, Sweetheart USA, um, Petal Place Forest, um, everyone did such a great job pulling this all together, and it was a great event. Um, our next meeting, I know we wanted to change it, Renell, because some people couldn't make that Thursday, so we're gonna go the 5th, which is Wednesday at 6:30. Okay, reports of the standing committees. Mr. Magistrelli of Finance.
Uh, no report today, Mr. Mayor. Um, our next meeting will be the 28th of, uh, this month at 6:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Domsalski of Roads and Public Works.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Mr. Scher of Health and Welfare.
No report.
Mr. Voitush of Wagers and Working Conditions.
No report, Mayor.
Mrs. Noack of Fire and Safety.
Uh, just a brief, I, the chief and I got together this evening, and we're just starting to do a little looking ahead for the budget for next year. So at least I know where we're gonna start with. And then, um, he gave me a copy of a thank-you note that was given to Detective Carlisle. And if I may read it, it says, "In a time when the environment between law enforcement and the community displays so much negative outcome, we are very proud in the manner of which you show humility and concern toward us as residents of the Northfield Village. Your handling of the arrest of my nephew was very professional and skillful. I truly appreciate how you de-escalated the situation and calmly maintained control, which you could have taken, which only could have taken years of experience and training. Thank you very much." So kudos to Detective Carlisle and the team that was, where was that located, Chief?
That was on, uh, Fowl Avenue.
Thank you. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Noack. Mr. Hips of Buildings and Grounds.
No report this evening.
Legislation, we're gonna go to Tricia on that. Tricia, is there anything else that you're gonna need on that, um, uh, for the parking lot, or we just passed the ordinances that's on here? Okay?
Okay, first is 201870, an emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Penn Care Inc. for the purchase of a 2019 STS Medics Ford 250 MR Transit Ambulance on first reading, or whatever anybody like to do with this.
Do we need that immediately, Mr. Mayor, or do we, can we, uh, put that on second reading?
Mr. Joe Zemec.
Mr. Zemec?
Ambulance.
Do you know, do you know the timeframe that we need to put in the order for it?
Um, it has a three-month turnaround, so when we place the order, the only reason, it's one of the van style ambulances, sometimes for transit. The only reason it will take three months is because we have to order it from factory, but they no longer do that at Penn Care. Um, I know Jason wanted to get it through before the end of the year, so it contains a degree of that in the spring.
Motion to suspend a three reading roll.
Second. Motion to suspend the three reading roll by Mr. Hips, seconded by Ms. Noack. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Domsalski. All opposed? Somebody make a motion for passage?
Passage.
Second.
Um, motion by Mr. Voitush, seconded by Mr. Hips. All in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next is 201871, an emergency resolution authorizing the purchase of road salt from American Rock Salt through the Community CU, I'm sorry, Community University Education Purchasing Association, and the purchase of road salt directly from Cargill if available and deliverable on first reading. We kinda need this one.
Motion to suspend third reading.
Second.
Motion to suspend the three-reading wa, rule by Mr. Hips, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed?
Motion for passage?
Second.
Mo, motion for passage by Mr. Hips, seconded by Ms. Noack, um, all in favor, passage?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay. Twenty eighteen seventeen, an emergency resolution authorizing certain amendments to the twenty eighteen appropriation resolution and/or transferring items already appropriated in that resolution on first reading.
Motion to suspend the three-reading rule?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Domsowski, seconded by Ms. Noack, all in favor of suspending the three-reading rule?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Motion to pass? Second.
Motion for passage by Ms. Noack, seconded by Ms. Domsowski, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
All opposed? That's it for the legislation.
Is there any old business, new business or announcements at this time?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would like to-
Mr. Magistrelli?
I would like to make a motion to suspend, um, the December twenty-sixth meeting, the day after Christmas.
Second.
You don't wanna come in after Christmas, next day?
I, I was willing to do it, but we took a poll and I lost.
Oh. Is somebody gonna get four?
Well, I'd like to make that motion.
I will second. Uh, motion to suspend the December twenty-sixth council meeting by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Domsowski, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay.
I got something.
Yes.
Mr. Sheriff? This will benefit the people and Ms. Noack's, um, ward, my ward, uh, Gary's ward, uh, in the springtime, they have baseball, uh, up at the, I don't know what the name of that park is, like, I mean, my ward, I don't know the name of the park.
Huntington.
What's the name of it?
Huntington.
Huntington Park. And, uh, the cars park and they park all on the road and it's only pretty much one-way and a lot of cars. And, uh, hear me out here, 'cause I, it's a new idea. All along Elm Street, we have woods there, a lot of trees, a lot of downed trees, and I do, I know it does not belong to us, but I was wondering if maybe Gary and myself and whoever else would want to try to talk to an executive up at the train place and see if they would allow us twenty-foot of that property and we could make a parking lot so people can pull in and we could keep the cars off the road perhaps? And, and the reason why I'm also saying this is because, uh, I watch the commercial trucks run up and down our residential streets, and I'm, I'm talking about crane trucks, I'm watching crane trucks, and I'm not saying, you know, I know that Mr. Wasowski said it's okay for that to go on, but there's a lot of trucks using our, uh, our roads as a thorough way, and maybe it would be kinda like a, a trade-off and perhaps they might wanna do something. We could maintain it, we could put trees up, we could make it real pretty. I would love to do that if that was in the village of Northfield, that would be great. Uh, that piece of property is in Macedonia, um, but I'm glad you did bring this up because one thing that we're gonna try to put in the budget, you know, is perhaps that parking lot we've been talking about over on Heights Avenue. There's two lots that we own there right at the end, so we've been talking about that for a while, so I think that's something that we would look at again for this year's budget.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you for your comment. Yes, Miss Agressio?
There's one other thing that I forgot to mention, I passed out this evening, um, the October month-end reports and reconciliation, and I would like a motion for acknowledgement of receipt.
Motion?
Thank you, Mr. Magistrelli. Motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Domsowski, all in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Joe, can you do me a favor? Can you have Jason let us know for the next meeting what time you need help for the Christmas party?
Sure.
So that anybody that wants to be able to be a part of it, we have that timeframe, would be appreciated, thank you.
Also, I will be going on vacation from December first until December seventh.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Voitush?
Uh, personally, I'd like to thank everyone for their well wishes and their support during the last, uh, about eight weeks. It's been great, thank you.
I'm glad you're back.
You too.
We all are, we're all, we're glad you're back, Gary.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything else? Harry Nunn, you have adjournment?
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
To adjourn? All opposed? Meeting is adjourned at?
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to say that Tricia added a lot of time to this meeting.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.